All right. We've reached that point. To begin our meeting and we'll start with the electronic notification and statement. Pursuant to Utah Code, West Valley City has determined that this meeting will be held electronically without an anchor location given the ongoing novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. West Valley City has determined the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location. This meeting will be held electronically. Members of the press and public are invited to view this meeting live on YouTube Thank you. It looks like we have six members of the council present. That is a quorum and we can officially begin. I believe that our seventh council member will join us shortly. Or at least we think so. With that then, we have our minutes of January 26th.
Move for approval of the minutes?
Second.
Properly before us. Hearing no further comments. Without objection, the minutes will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion passes unanimously. Let's see. Next, we will review our regular meeting for later tonight. There have been no changes except for the update on the resolution. Hopefully you noted the changes we discussed were incorporated into the resolution. Any questions on that or concerns? Or on any other issues on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to, let's see, our public hearing that's going to be held next week on application ZT-10-2020 filed by the city requesting oh, an outdoor event center change in conjunction with regional shopping malls. Be a conditional use permit in C2 zones. This will be handled if on our agenda next week by ordinance 21-04. And I believe Mr. Pastrick is available to update us on the purpose here and make himself available for any questions.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This application is an ordinance change proposed by the city where an outdoor event center, so an event center that would allow things like concerts would be a conditional use in the C2 zone if it's in conjunction with a regional shopping mall. And really by definition, the Valley Fair Mall is the only regional shopping mall we have in the city currently. So, in other words, this change would allow outdoor events at the Valley Fair Mall as a conditional use. And so the idea, if this ordinance change is approved, the mall would come back to the city with a conditional use permit to propose smaller events at their plaza in particular. As the council knows, the mall is investing some money in the plaza area and redesigning that and redoing that. And part of the intent there was to hold smaller, some smaller events outdoors. And so again, that's the intent of this change would be to allow some smaller events at the mall. Any questions?
I have a question, Steve. I'm sure I've seen car shows and other types of events at the mall. Fairs even, I mean, is this an expansion of their ability to operate businesses they want to? Is it a reduction of their ability? Is it that we just turned a blind eye before or how is this any different?
It is different in that, so for example, we've had things like fireworks stands or we've had, you know, car sales in the past, things like those types of events. We've handled those as what we call temporary uses. And in our code, temporary uses have some pretty strict limitations on how frequent those can be. And so these outdoor events would really not fall within that temporary use or the temporary use restrictions. And so this would allow them to do, again, under a conditional use with restrictions, but to do those as part of the conditions instead of a temporary use, which is much more limited.
Then would they need to get an event per permit per event? Or would it just be something they can do anytime they want to?
So those things that are still temporary uses, they would still apply for temporary use. But for for these outdoor events like small concerts, those would be covered under the conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
So there would be no limit on how many events they could have? They could have three concerts a week?
So that, great question. We could, and we've talked about, discussed this with the planning commission. The types of conditions that we would anticipate and are actually mentioned in the ordinance would be things like where the sound emitting equipment would be located. So, you know, being specific about where, say, speakers are, sound levels. We could also address the the number of events as part of the conditional use. And we had another discussion with the planning commission about, well, what if we were to just put all that in the ordinance? And it's hard to anticipate all the potential types of things we might consider. And so that's why we were thinking, once the mall comes in with their proposal, we could review that as a conditional use and then place conditions on that would address those types of things.
Because in the past, they've had the carnival there, they've had car shows. I don't really remember how many a year they have.
And those have been done as a temporary use. And if serves, I think they're limited to two in a year.
Oh, only two a year?
Yeah, that's, that's what I recall is for a temporary use, they're pretty limited.
So are all of these going to stay out front to the west? Or are some going to bleed off to the east parking lot? Or in that new plaza?
What we've discussed is more mostly in the plaza, potentially up further to the north. But but those, the locations would be identified in the conditional use permit.
Okay. This just seems really open-ended with no limitations. And that's why I'm kind of concerned about what will happen in the conditional use part of it.
And I understand that comment. And we could, as we discussed with the planning commission, include some standards upfront in the ordinance and then leave the rest to conditional use conditions. So that is a possibility if the council feels more comfortable, you know, spelling out those restrictions now.
Okay, thank you.
And I agree that it seems really expansive and they can do whatever they want, whenever they want. And then as I think about it, it's kind of like, so what? I mean, if these things are okay on a Thursday, they're okay on a Friday, they're okay on a Saturday. I mean, there's aren't any. I'd be hard pressed to find where that's going to cause a noise problem. They should be limited to a few times a year. Or, I mean, it just seems like if this is okay, then it is just flat out okay. So that's kind of where I'm sitting on it now.
Yeah, maybe I could add a comment to that. There are actually times when they have gotten too loud during the business day for businesses across the street, even within the mall. So we do want to have some level of control over that, even possibly to the point that there are actually differences day to day. Like there's different activity going on in the street in the work week as opposed to on the weekend. Or there's different activity going on before five o'clock or after six o'clock in the summer. You know, that sort of thing. We have actually had issues and complaints from surrounding businesses.
I mean, from what direction, Wayne?
Mostly west. Also some from the south. So, you know, businesses, the apartment complexes over there. I can't remember any off the top of my head to the north by like where Fairborn is. But that's just because they're all brand new or not there yet. The same, the same conditions would exist. We've had problems in City Hall on a afternoon day where they start some concert up earlier, which they had talked about having and then didn't control it or didn't check their equipment and whatever. It literally had music pounding through City Hall walls. So it's affected us directly.
So then are these issues, are they dealt within the ordinances proposed?
So, yeah, in kind of ways presented. So I think generally they're controlled within the ordinance, but also we have control at the temporary use level from an approval standpoint as well. Although Steve ought to really speak more to the specificity of where the controls exactly are at.
Right, so right, right now, the concerts really aren't, aren't allowed outdoors for the mall. And so this, this would allow that, at least on the frequency that they would like to see. And so, again, we could, we could look at regulations for sound as a condition in the condition use permit. Or if the council prefers, we could get much more specific in this ordinance and spell those out. And again, with the planning commission, they feel comfortable with, you know, placing those when the of the conditions, when they come in with a conditional use permit. But if the council's concerned about, you know, giving that that ability to the planning commission, we can come back with more specific, for example, sound regulations as part of the ordinance.
And then would this only apply to the mall or any business that's on the mall property? Like Jamba Juice could throw their own little mini concert in the parking lot in front of their place? Or it's only the owners of the mall sponsored events?
So if the code change applies to the mall property overall? And it would be, again, they can, they can apply for, the intent was we were to have a conditional use that would govern any type of outdoor event. And so the regulations would apply to pretty much a concert that happens anywhere on on that site.
Or any event they wanted to throw.
Right, unless, again, unless it were something that's already covered in our temporary use regulations. And so again, hopefully this part's not confusing. But we do have, we do have things they can do already as part of a temporary use. It's just that they're limited in their frequency and how often they can do those. And so this would allow them to have them more, more often than twice a year, which is what the temporary use limitation is right now.
So if they're going to have a concert, do they have to come in for each concert and get a temporary use permit? So you know how many they're having or it's just go and we'll only bother you if we get complaints?
So this, under, under this change, they would apply for a conditional use permit to be able to do concerts outside. And then we would establish those conditions and then they would not need to come in for a permit for each time they did a concert.
Okay, and you said they have an idea of how many they want to do in a year? Do you know what that is?
At this point, I don't have a, I don't have a firm number, but I can, I can work on getting that from the mall. They did mention that size-wise, it would be in a, you know, a few, a few hundred people. So we're not, we're not talking thousands, but.
But how do you, and I don't know how they're going to control to keep it between two and 500. I mean, that's the thing that if it starts getting overwhelming. Okay, thank you.
Steve? The purpose for this one? That we try to bring more people into the mall?
Right, so the mall, really this is the mall wanting to, you know, drive more business to the mall ultimately. So that's really the, the purpose here is to have events that hopefully will also, you know, attract more retail traffic.
And you know that we have Maverick Center right there and also Amitya. And so are we going to deal with the schedule? We'll give it all two places. They have the same, you know, menu, same type of a business they run in, same thing like the mall can run in. There's a conflict of interest.
One question, I, I can see where this would not, you know, impact or compete with the Maverick Center or USANA. Maybe not even the city's as unyet unnamed theater by the Maverick Center. But what about, as Tom mentioned, the amphitheater, Fairborn Station, food trucks? Is there any problem there? Will they feel slighted if we continue to do food trucks and concerts just across the street almost? How does that play in?
Right, from my perspective, I don't see that there's, that there's a conflict there. And, and to my knowledge, the, the event that they did have before was not a, was not a paid where, you know, someone would pay to go to the concert. So these are more smaller, you know, community type events. But, but again, from my perspective, I don't see that that would be a conflict with what's happening at Fairborn.
Okay, so it sounds like you're saying if it's non-pay, then it really doesn't matter. Anyone can, you know, pretty well do that as long as they get permission.
Well, again, the, it's, when it comes to doing an outdoor event, even if it's not something that's paid, they still, right, as it sits right now, they're not able to do the, you know, more than a couple of events as a temporary use. And so, so again, whether they're, they're charged for or not, they still need to get or have the ability under the ordinance to be able to do that.
Oh, but I think that's a problem, right, Steve? So if I were them, I wouldn't go to the Amitya or Maverick Center to pay a ticket for $15 to go to the show. I can wait to go to the mall. I don't have to pay any money. And I have a whole family there out there with me and no money. The thing is, here is how we're going to do, we're going to work together with those guys. So that means we run, we're not going to run into the problem like that.
Yeah, my, my comment there is be that, that the types of concerts you would have at, say, the Maverick Center, USANA would not be the, the types of concerts you would at the mall. These would be much, much smaller, local type events.
And, and it would seem like that they would be unlikely to compete with anything except maybe something the city was doing. For example, you know, at the animal shelter, they've had a car show. You know, an old time car show. And so it seems like the only issue there might be with some city-sponsored activities. But it seems like the more of those we have, the better, almost, regardless of where they are. And I'm not sure that they appeal to the same clientele. Someone who would want to go to something at the mall would might likely be very different from someone who wants to go to the amphitheater.
But also.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, we're going to go back to the question number, I mean, the comment Ken last he made earlier about 200 people, 2500 people. How are we going to manage that with the security? See right there. And.
Well, I would assume, Mr. Pastrick, and correct me here, if they're having an activity, they take full responsibility for the size, for the security, for, and if anything happens, it's them, not the city. Is that correct?
Right, they would, and again, those, those are the kinds of things we could address as part of the conditional use as far as providing security and those types of conditions or regulations could be imposed.
And they would be responsible, for example, if someone were to have a heart attack there to facilitate getting emergency people there. Or if it's on a hot summer day, providing, you know, water for people, et cetera.
Right, and that's, for example, one of the things we would look at is looking at the overall mall site and saying, okay, here, here are locations where this is permissible. And then making sure there are still, you know, adequate access routes for, you know, emergency services to get into those locations. And so we wouldn't be able to just be a blanket approval. They can do this anywhere, but we would have to designate areas on the site where they can do events.
Who will the permit approval be under?
So the, the conditional use permit would be through the planning commission.
Okay, so it wouldn't be like under Parks and Recreation for people who want to use a park. This is different because it's a conditional use.
Correct.
Okay. There's a moment of silence there. So I asked the question, are there any more comments or concerns? Hearing none. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda. And this is another public hearing. Make sure I'm still on the right thing here. Would be application GPZ-8-2020 filed by West Valley City, a general plan change, a zone change, et cetera. It would include ordinance 21-05 for the general plan for changes of land use from high density, et cetera. And ordinance 21-06, the zoning map change of zone from RM, anyway, a number of those. There are specific reasons for that, but I'll leave that to, I guess, Mr. Pastrick to address.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor. So I'll, I'll share my screen and show the, the properties in question here. So the, this, the, the six properties here on the map are the ones in question. And just a little bit of history. So back in 2016, it was actually the, the city initiated the, the change in zoning to the, the zoning that's in place on these properties right now, which is the city center zone. And at that time, the city was working with the county housing authority that's now called Housing Connect to come or put together essentially a redevelopment plan for the, the, what's the Valley Fair Apartments? That's the larger piece to the south as well as the duplexes north of that apartment development. And you may recall, there was a plan presented and a development agreement that was prepared. But unfortunately, the, the county housing authority never signed that development agreement. And really, the challenge I think they ran into at the time was project financing. And so that project was really put on hold. And now at this point where we don't have a signed development agreement with the zoning in place, the staff were recommending that the zoning revert or be changed back to what it was originally. And so this zone change would restore the zoning that was in place prior to the change in 2016. So the RM zoning would go on the Valley Fair Apartments, the larger parcel that's owned by the county housing authority. And then the five duplexes would return to the R28 zoning, which again was, is really just recognizing what's in place there now. You'll notice there's a couple of parcels north of this that are left out. Those are actually owned by the RDA. So those are still in RDA ownership and were previously duplexes, but have since been vacated or demolished, I should say. And so again, this really is just returning the the property to the zoning that was in place back in 2016. And again, the idea here is that the, the project that was planned back then is really no longer pursuing and really no longer possible as proposed back then. And so we're recommending that the zoning be returned to what it was.
Okay, Council? Any question? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand what's being proposed, but what's the impetus? Is there a problem with the zoning as it is now for the owner? Or is there something else they want to do where we need to change the zoning back to what it was? Or, I mean, the project we had planned four or five years ago didn't happen. But why would we change the zoning back and why would we do it now?
Yeah, great question. So the, at the time the zoning was put in place, we had a development agreement that was very specific. In fact, there's a few other slides in your packet that shows the, the particular project that was, that was proposed. And in that development agreement, there were standards that went above and beyond what was in the zoning ordinance. And so because that agreement was not executed, we really don't have those additional provisions in play. And so the, and really from the staff's perspective, the, the zoning was put in place with the understanding that the property would be developed in accordance with the development agreement. So one, one protection we have now, the, or just procedural, procedural difference we do now is we don't take any development agreements to the council now that don't, aren't already signed, right? So that's one procedural change we make so that we don't have this situation again.
Sure, but why don't we just wait until the county or some developer or somebody wants to do something here? I don't see that changing the zoning back and forth changes anything. Well, having lagged four or five years, I just, I'm not understanding what's the impetus to do anything.
So the, by having the zoning revert back, it gives the city the ability to renegotiate a new development agreement. And because again, the, right now, if, if a project were to come in, we do have zoning in place that has standards, but it would just be left to what's in the code. Whereas going back to the original zoning, if someone wanted to propose a change in zoning, we would essentially renegotiate a new development agreement. So it gives, gives us that ability.
So we want, we want them to come ask for a zone change to city center zone or something else so that we can negotiate at that point?
Yes, that's exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I might add in as well to that.
And I might add in as well to that. That would be our normal desire and process and how our zoning ordinance is structured anyway, because we of course want to make sure that you, as the elected officials have the best protection, maximum control you can over zoning ordinance per se. And there's no way to, no better way to do that than start from where you had the maximum control. In this particular instance, all of those arguments, uh, apply. And I would also add that in a couple of ways, we even want that more. One, this is in a particularly sensitive area, of course, being close to or part of Fairborn. And two, having always had the best experience in working with, um, from a commitment standpoint, the folks that, uh, uh, we've been working with on this project as, as is evident by the fact that they didn't get this done. Um, and so therefore, yeah, we just would recommend and wouldn't like to have as much protection in place as we can get.
Gotcha.
Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next item on our agenda, which is ordinance twenty one dash oh seven, uh, to amend our code for certain requirements applicable to alarm systems. And is this going to be Chief Evans? I see he's on here, but who's going to do this then, Wayne?
Sorry, Mayor, I left myself muted there. Yeah, it's either gonna be Chief Evans or Chief, do you have maybe the fire inspector who's handling this?
Oh, there he's, there he's got his picture on and pretty quick, he's gonna turn his microphone on.
Okay.
There we go.
Yes, what, what this is, is it's, it's a cleanup. Um, the code does not require Class A wiring. And our code is in conflict with what the, uh, NFPA seventy two is. So what we're trying to do is basically just clean up our code and they do not have to use Class A wiring. So they can use, they can use other wiring for alarm systems. So we're just more in line with what the standard is in the industry.
Chief, could you explain what that NFPA seventy two is? Is that a national code international? And what's the difference between that and the international code per se?
It, it really, it, it mimics the, the international code. It's the National Fire Protection Agency. Um, it, uh, it's just the electrical code part of the fire code, but it mimics the electrical code. I know it doesn't probably make a lot of sense. The codes overlap a little bit, but alarm systems are in, in the, uh, National Fire Protection Code.
Any questions or comments, council? Hearing none, you must have done an excellent job, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to resolution twenty one dash twenty four. Uh, ratifying city manager's appointment of Steve Pastrick as community and economic development director. Maybe who, while this is being done, I assume it'll be Wayne or whatever, or uh, Nicole, uh, will also do resolution twenty one dash twenty five, ratifying city manager's appointment of Kobe Wilson as city engineer. Okay, Mr. Pata.
Bill having issues with my mute button. Sorry, Mayor. Um, so yes, I will handle this. It's my pleasure to bring Mr. Pastrick before you as part of the overall organizational updates and changes we've been making. This one also by uh, code requires ratification by the councils. So, uh, I think you all know and love Steve Pastrick like we do at the staff level. You certainly see him as much as we do. So you're eminently, uh, uh, familiar with his qualif- qualifications and we're happy to have him on taking over for Ms. Cottle as the CED director, though he will still be working for Ms. Cottle in, in her capacity as assistant city manager. And on Mr. Wilson. So I don't know that you far, folks are as um, familiar with Mr. Wilson, but also been working for the city for a number of years, very well qualified, highly sought after from a number of other entities out there, especially in this time, we have, uh, high demand in construction, that sort of thing over the past few years. I would like to give Russ a chance to speak to his qualifications and just describe him a little bit from the city engineer standpoint.
Thanks, Wayne. Uh, do you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, so Kobe is very well qualified. I mean, he has a, he, he went to the, didn't go to the same uni- well, he actually has two degrees, one from a good university and one from the one up on the hill, but, um, but he's a very well qualified, uh, engineer and will do a great job for the city. Um, it's, uh, I highly recommend him to be our next city engineer succeeding Mr. Johnson, who, uh, will serve for the next few months as an assistant public works director.
Uh, how long has, uh, Kobe been with the city here, West Valley?
I believe it's seven years. Let me
Okay.
Let me Yes.
Two thousand twelve.
Well. Thanks, Karen.
Hearing no further comments? We'll move on to our consent agenda and we have, uh, four items on there. They are all similar. Uh, resolutions twenty one dash twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, and twenty nine. And those, these are all, uh, easement purchase, perpetual easement, temporary construction easements on the twenty seven hundred West project uh, on the further south portion that we will be doing. Do you have any questions on any of those? Hearing none. Uh, we'll take and, uh, move on on our agenda. Okay, I don't know what happened, but I just lost everything on my computer. Disappeared. Wanted to do some updating, so. I gotta find my agenda again. Hang on just a second here. You know, when I used to have paper agendas, sometimes I'd drop them on the floor and I'd lose my place, but, uh, boy, when it does it electronically, it just completely disappears. Let's see, four thirty. Okay, made it back. Next on our agenda is some training under communications for Paylocity. And so Wayne, any comments for this, or?
Yes, there is still messing with my mute button and I wasn't even on mute. Sorry about that. So this is a little out of the ordinary. We don't normally bring a lot of training items per se to the council, but we've switched over to this, uh, payroll system and it has a lot of nice features uh, that go beyond just looking up what's your paycheck at on it. So I thought it might be helpful to the council to take a look. We might show you something you may not have seen feature wise, which you might be abused to. Something I know I particularly like is in the past, I used to have to go log onto the computer. If I was looking for my, uh, paycheck, it's like a three step process. Now you can face ID and do it on your phone in about half of the time. So anyway, just as sort of an introduction, I thought it'd be a good uh, chance to both maybe show you guys, uh, a better way to do what we've been doing for a long time and at the same time show off a little bit how we are doing things a little bit better way than we've done for a long time. So that I'll hand it off to John, who I was just waiting for him to kind of walk away from the podium so I could make him, uh, come right back to it.
Uh, does this mean that, uh, the we can figure out how to down, download that even for someone as technologically challenged as myself?
Yeah, it's actually really very easy. And I was having problems, not so much problems, but it's just like I said, it's like a multi-step process to even look up. Make sure your deductions and everything were right on the page. Uh, paste up, and now it's just a lot easier to do it. It looks to me, because I see some people kind of scurrying around behind the scenes that they might have had some issues, but it looks like they're getting it to come up. Okay, turn it over to John. Nope, not hearing it.
Did he ever come back to the microphone? Oh, there he is. Nope, they got him another mic- microphone and that one doesn't work.
Well, let me give you a little also a- added color commentary to this whole thing. So I'm reminded of, and, and I, this is no knock on Eric because he's done a great job over the last few months making all this work, but it does remind me every time something like this happens. One of my most valuable classes in my uh, Masters of Public Administration course wasn't necessarily the accounting, wasn't necessarily the legal uh, training, wasn't necessarily management theory. It was communications class. And one of the first things I was taught to was make sure all your AV stuff works before the meeting, right? Which has, uh, special meaning and even sometimes harder accomplishment to get to in our world here, but there you go. I've seen that look, see, uh, Eric has a backup playing. And all music.
See, I guess Wayne, it doesn't matter if it all works beforehand, because once you end the meeting, everything changes. Who?
Bad feedback.
Yeah. Maybe, yeah, they need to go in another room.
Yeah. If we don't get back from them in say twenty seconds, we're gonna go on to the next item and then maybe we can come back to them after they get that figured out.
It sounds better already.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we're a little dazzled by the ceiling lights behind you, but I think we'll just live with that.
Yep. Especially when he brings up, uh, sharing a screen or something.
Right.
Okay. Maybe we got it figured out. All right, well, uh, Mayor and Council, thank you, uh, for the opportunity to talk and, and Wayne. So we'll see how this goes. Um, hopefully we can get through this. Um, yeah, so I think, uh, Wayne introduced, introduced things, uh, uh, pretty well. And so I just wanted to, I not spend a whole lot of time, but just, uh, get into a few features that I think are relevant to you and, and will be useful. Uh, so, uh, I'll, I'll show you how to download the app, um, which app to, to download, how to log in, and then a few features that are pretty relevant. Um, we will, HR will send each of you an individual email with your login information and instructions. So that way you don't have to try to follow along right now as we go. And, um, then if you have any questions, you can always contact us and we'll help you out there. So Eric, I think you can go forward. So regardless of the phone you have, uh, you'll be able to download the Paylocity mobile app. Um, it'll have that orange and white icon. Um, so just when you go in and download it, make sure you download the correct app. There might be a few different ones that, uh, say Paylocity. Um, but again, we'll, we'll include that in the instructions. Go ahead. Uh, once downloaded, the first screen that'll pop up is your login screen. Um, our company ID is one zero six two four six. Um, we'll make sure you have that information. It's just kind of a unique number that we have. And then your username and password, which will be unique to you that you'll need to set up. Um, so once you're logged in, go, go ahead. Your, your first menu screen that comes up will be this, and I think this gives you a good idea of all the different features that we have on a mobile app, which is, is very convenient and nice to have. Some of them we currently use, some of them we don't, we may in the future. Uh, but I think this just shows you some different things we can do. So Eric, you can just kind of go forward probably a few times and I'll talk about these. Uh, so, uh, your name and, and contact information is on there. You can, you can make changes there. Uh, you can check your pay stubs, your W twos. There may be times through, uh, uh, through the app that we'll send out surveys. You can complete and submit surveys. We may have trainings. We, we push out this way. Um, and then also you can update your sign in settings. Um, I think go one more, Eric. So really the two I want to touch on today that will be useful to you is, uh, setting up your login settings as well as accessing your pay information. Go ahead. So really, when you go to the app settings, there's only, there's these two items that are very useful. Uh, so the first, um, and Eric, you can kind of keep going. Uh, you can click to stay logged in, uh, so that, yeah, go back one, I think. Um, anyway, so you can, you can choose to stay logged in so that when you open the app, you don't have to log in every single time, which is convenient and you can access some things. Uh, and then you can also set up the biometric so that, uh, depending on the phone you have, you can either use a fingerprint or facial recognition to log in when you need to see, uh, sensitive information such as your pay. Uh, go ahead. If you click the, uh, three bars there, uh, you can bring up your menu again. And now I'll go into the pay section. Show you what that looks like and the information available to you. Uh, go ahead and one more. All right, so when you click on pay, this is the screen that will come up and it'll show your most current check. Uh, but when you're in the screen, you can scroll down and see any other deductions or pay information. Uh, very nice to have, very convenient. Uh, keep, go ahead. You can, in the top right, there's a little envelope icon, and if you click on that, uh, you can email yourself or anybody you need a copy of that pay stub. Uh, go ahead, go forward, Eric. Once you click on that, it shows you this screen. There's a few items you can edit, which is who it gets sent to, the subject line. Uh, and then you can put a password on it if you would like. That way whoever that gets sent to has to have that password in order to open it. Uh, go ahead. And go a couple more, I think. And then just click send and it'll send that directly to that email you indicated. Uh, go ahead. So in the bottom, in the middle, you can click on history and from there you can access any of your previous pay stubs. Uh, go ahead. So for the current year, twenty twenty one, uh, it'll have your pay stubs. In the top right, you can click, uh, on the year. And it will show you a list of, uh, previous years to go in and access those pay stubs as well. Go forward a couple of times, I think. One more. Um, one more time. All right, so then if you go back to the, your, kind of your current pay stub screen, go forward one more, Eric. In the bottom right, you can click on tax forms. And this is very convenient right now during tax season. Uh, so you can access your W two from here. You can click on, uh, the statement and it'll give you some information. And then you can also, again, in the top right, uh, email that to yourself or anybody else who may need it. Uh, the only difference here is you have to password protect a, a tax statement. Um, so make sure you, whatever password you'd like, you can put that password in there and click send and have that available. So, um, go ahead. So again, um, some convenient features, uh, that, uh, our employees have appreciated having available kind of at any time that that, as Wayne said, uh, we thought you guys might, might like to have and, and know what features are available. So, and, and again, we will email each of you your personal login information and some instructions so that, uh, you have that. And again, you guys are always welcome to contact Human Resources with any questions along any of these lines. So. Think you can go forward through that, Eric, and I think, uh, we're about there. So. Anybody have any questions for me? Questions on that or anything else? Well, um, thank you guys again. I appreciate the time. Wayne, is there anything else you needed from me?
No, very good. Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Just be available for questions. And if, and if anybody does have any questions afterwards, let us know. We'd be glad to tutor you up a little bit. It really is a very helpful way to look at all this pay information that we need, right? At any time, you know, whether it's the annual data or the, the paycheck data itself. So great tool.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. And sorry for the mix up on the microphones.
Okay. Well, thank you. Well, that wasn't really a human resource issue anyway, so. Next we have some communications on restaurant establishments and drive-throughs. Mr. Pastrick is getting a workout tonight. Looks like he's back for more. Well, I guess we didn't give him enough in the last few items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll, uh, I'll share my screen here again. And so just as a, a quick reminder, uh, so back in December, we had a discussion with the council on the topic of fast food restaurants with drive-up windows. And we reviewed at that time with the council, uh, just existing regulations. So where those uses are allowed, where we have overlay zones where they're restricted, and discussed the potential of perhaps changing some of those restrictions. And during that discussion back in December, the council requested some additional information about the restaurant industry. So where things are headed generally, you know, differences between full service versus limited, uh, service restaurants. And so, um, in your packet, you'll see the original presentation that we gave back in December. And then the presentation I'm about to share with you. And so first of all, I just wanted to provide some, uh, information about the difference between limited or full service restaurants and then limited service. So this information comes from the, uh, North American Industry Classification System. That's a, or N A I C S. It's a mouthful. And without reading through these definitions, really the primary difference here is that with a full service restaurant, you pay after you eat. And then with a limited service restaurant, you pay before you eat. That's one of the, the, the main differentiators here is, is when you pay. And then of course with full service, you tend to be seated and, and be served. Although again, that's, there are many full service restaurants that are of course offering takeout. So it's not just limited to, uh, sit-down service. And then going to our own code, the difference between just a, a restaurant or a sit-down restaurant and fast food establishments is centered around the, how the food is served. So in the case of fast food, it typically is in disposable containers. Whereas with a, like more of a full service restaurant, you would have actual, you know, like actual silver and, you know, uh, plates that you have to wash. So that's one of the, the main distinctions in our own code as far as the difference between the two uses. Now, the, the next slide gets into some of the, what I call, uh, restaurant industry metrics pre-COVID. So I wanted to make sure that the information I was sharing was before the pandemic because I know the council was concerned about, you know, kind of setting policy or potentially changing ordinances based on pandemic conditions when those hopefully are temporary, right? And so, um, this is information that comes from the National Restaurant Association. So you'll see that off-premise dining, so in any form of, um, off-premise eating, so whether that's drive-through or takeout or delivery, could be any one of those. That accounted for about 60% of the restaurant occasions. So not 60% of revenue, but 60% of the occasions or times people are actually doing transactions in 2019. And then I thought it was interesting here also from a consumer survey from 2019 that, uh, consumers were asked, how often do you use these services? And you can see, um, that when it comes to drive-through, 90% of the respondents used the drive-through at least once a month. Takeout, it was 90% once a month and you can see the other ones. So, and the just difference here, delivery would be delivery by the restaurant itself. So think, for example, Domino's delivering their own pizza. And then third party would be like an Uber Eats where it's a, a separate company doing the delivery. So the next one here I thought was, uh, this is an interesting quote. This came from a, a New York Times article, um, from May of last year. So this was, um, you know, a few months into the pandemic in the, the article. And there's the, the link at the bottom was talking about how, uh, drive-throughs were really helping restaurants during the pandemic. But this particular quote is talking about, uh, drive-throughs before the pandemic. And it says, at many chains, including McDonald's, the drive-through accounted for as much as 70% of revenue before generating billions of dollars for the industry every month. So, uh, at least according to this article, for some, for some chains, the drive-through, um, is, is the majority of the business. You know, that, that's not true. I'm sure for all restaurants, but for some. Now, again, talking about just the industry, uh, the, the, what I call the, or what's labeled here is the food away from home market. So this is, um, looking at how much of the sales go, uh, to full service versus limited service to what they, what's called all other. And that would be things like catering or cafeterias, right? So your food away from home, but it's not necessarily a restaurant. What I think's interesting in this slide is that, uh, while there's not a, a huge difference in the, the market share between full service and limited service, you'll notice that in, uh, recent years, limited service is, uh, outperforming in terms of revenue, um, the, uh, full service market. And again, uh, looking at the, the scale of this graph, there's not a, a huge difference, but, but it is noticeable in the last few years. And some more information from the National Association, or National Restaurant Association. Uh, they published a study at the end of 2019 and you can access it on their website. But it's, uh, trying to predict the, where the market's headed over the next 10 years. And the most significant takeaway I, I felt from the report, and this was in the executive summary, is that the off-premises market, uh, which includes carryout, delivery, drive-through, mobile units, is where they're projecting most of the growth is going to come from in the next 10 years. And then finally, this last slide, uh, coming from the U S Census Bureau, I think this is, uh, is pretty telling. This is looking at all, uh, U S food sales, so grocery as well as, uh, uh, food and drinking places. So in this graph, the orange line represents a total grocery store sales in the United States. And then the blue line represents total, you know, food and service or food services and drinking places revenue. And so up until about 2015, 2014, uh, grocery stores, uh, generated more revenue. But then, uh, around that time, uh, or following 2015, restaurants and, and drinking places actually generated more revenue than grocery stores. But then if you'll notice, and this is no surprise, in 2020, uh, with the pandemic, uh, restaurant sales took a pretty big hit. But then notice that grocery stores, of course, ticked up, uh, somewhat. So the, so, um, they were, they grew a little bit, um, a little bit more than previous years in terms of growth and revenue, where people, of course, because of the pandemic, choosing to eat, uh, to eat at home more than, uh, uh, going to restaurants. And it'll be interesting to see what happens as the, the pandemic eases and, uh, people start feeling more comfortable going out. If that, if the, that trend continues, we'll, we'll keep watching that. So, um, that's the, that's the last slide I have. And so again, we were just wanting to provide the council with more information about the restaurant industry before the pandemic and then a little bit of this at the end there about, um, during the pandemic. And hopefully, again, provide some information for you to decide if, if you think, um, the city should, uh, keep our drive-through or fast food drive-through regulations as they are. Or, uh, if, um, now's the time to perhaps make some adjustments.
Counsel, any questions? Any desired action? Or proposed changes? Wow, the silence is overwhelming. Okay. We'll move on to a legislative update then. Mister, oh, there, I thought, saw for a second. There we go. Looks like, uh, Lincoln Church is going to give us an update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council and Wayne. Thanks for having me this evening. I just got off the hill from another busy day on Capitol Hill. To give everybody just a quick update, we have been actively working with members of, uh, the Salt Lake County delegation. These are the legislative delegation on a fairly robust transportation funding package, uh, that will be the benefit of municipalities in Salt Lake County. For those that have been around for quite some time, there has always been a fairly political process for determining which projects would get funded through the quarter of the quarter fund, which is a fund that's exclusive to Salt Lake County to support projects in cities located within, within Salt Lake County. This year's effort, uh, in coordination with Representative Donegan and Senator Harper, we are trying to do things much more formula-based. However, there is still some opportunity for some additional revenue to, uh, specific cities that are based on specific projects. And in that, West Valley City is doing quite well. So based on formula, West Valley City would get roughly a million dollars right now. Uh, we've identified 1.1 million dollars that would be provided to the city on an annual basis for a period of 15 years. And in addition to that, uh, we are working with Representative Donegan on some additional one-time dollars that would come to the city as well. So, uh, those negotiations are still ongoing. We've got meetings tomorrow to hopefully finalize those negotiations before the House debate and House floor vote. And then it's off to the Senate. The goal on the transportation funding is to truly get the quarter of the quarter conversation, which is again, specific to Salt Lake County cities, out of the way before we have the broader bonding operation. So in addition to the quarter of the quarter, uh, there's going to be a fairly robust conversation around statewide bonding for transportation infrastructure. It's anticipated that we're looking between 1 billion and 2 billion additional dollars that will go into the infrastructure fund, uh, which is called the TIF fund. And that is something that's prioritized by the Transportation Commission. Uh, there are several projects in the northern portion of Salt Lake County that would be funded as part of that. And we're actively working with UDOT and stakeholders in that broader conversation around bonding as well. So this week's been fairly, uh, consumed with, uh, infrastructure funding, uh, as we kind of put the final touches on much of the budget conversations that are taking place. Uh, and starting next week, we're going to start running right into much of the policy considerations. As I believe I mentioned on the last call, uh, the legislature has filed about 1,300 pieces of legislation. So far they have about 600 pieces, uh, drafted, many of which are affecting local governments ranging from housing issues, homelessness issues, obviously transportation, infrastructure, uh, and a host of other things that we're keeping our eye on. So I provided an updated list of bills that we are actively watching on behalf of the city. Uh, please take a look at those and then as usual, if you have any questions, uh, please don't hesitate to get with us so that we can understand any concerns or questions you may have. And with that, Mayor, I'm happy to turn it back over to you and to the council for additional consideration.
Do you have any specific bills? I have two that I want to discuss briefly. But, uh, council members, any of particular interest to you? Then HB 82, accessory dwelling units, as we refer to them, uh, how's that faring up there?
So HB 82 is being run by Representative Ward out of Bountiful. Uh, the bill was held in committee where he was requested to go work with the relevant stakeholders, which is the development community as well as the local government. His bill would preempt, uh, local, as drafted, would preempt local governments from largely regulating much of the eight, uh, accessory dwelling unit, uh, activity that may occur within the cities by making them permitted uses in L zones. We, as the city, are actively working with Representative Ward on some alternative language that would hopefully exempt West Valley City from, uh, those provisions that are being currently contemplated based on our relevant share of affordable housing that currently exists, exists within the city. And then also in working with Mr. Pastrick, we have been working on a dynamic that also evaluates the average household size within a given jurisdiction as well. West Valley City is a bit of an outlier as we have larger household sizes than most jurisdictions within Salt Lake County. So those are two elements in which we're using to hopefully, um, exempt, uh, West Valley City from HB 82 for consideration. In addition, it should be noted for the council that we do have an ADU ordinance that's in place. And so, uh, obviously discouraged by the legislature's interest in preempting our existing ordinance.
Okay. And how about HB 98? This is the one that keeps coming back, you know, building materials amendment or whatever for local government.
Yes, this would, in large part, again, preempt local government's ability to do inspections on new development and reconstruction. Uh, we've actively been opposing that bill as well. I have reached out to Representative Ray to let him know of the concerns associated with this piece of legislation. That bill is still sitting in rules, uh, and leadership has, in large part tied this to the broader effort on ADUs and affordable housing. So I think if we can come to some sort of resolution on ADUs, it will be highly unlikely that we see much effort behind this bill. Uh, but it is definitely being used as a potential leverage point in the broader conversation around housing in our community. So at this point, not much to be concerned about, hasn't even gone to its first committee, uh, but certainly something we're keeping our eye on there.
Okay. I didn't know where it was at, but, uh, the comment I would make is, uh, the unfortunate thing about, uh, right now in the legislature, they want to take the authority, but they won't take the responsibility. You know, on ADUs and building materials and amendments, uh, oftentimes our local population are the ones who are most interested and bring to bear the most pressure on these issues because it's their neighborhood. And they call us, they don't call the state. If the state wants people to call them and they have to deal with individual issues, I don't know. Maybe that's not such a terrible idea.
Oh, it is definitely a legislative session to preempt local government. I was on a call earlier today where I've, again, we've only seen about a third of the bills being introduced. And there are already about 60 bills that specifically attempt to preempt either cities or counties, largely in the area of land use, but also in the area of revenue and taxation as well. So definitely the year of trying to clamp down on local government from the state legislature. Nothing new, but a renewed effort this year for sure.
Well, I've told them before, I think they ought to, you know, there are a few things they ought to take. I tried to see if they wouldn't jump in and help, uh, lend some support, bonding support to Utopia and help us out there. And for some reason, they didn't want to do that.
If I can, on the Utopia front, if it's appropriate, Wayne and Mayor, uh, to give you a quick update on some elements with Utopia. So for those that aren't aware, uh, we have been working with our federal lobbyists and Nicole has kind of briefed me and brought me into that, uh, conversation as well. There are about 50 to 70 million dollars worth of resources coming to the state of Utah for the purposes of broadband access in disadvantaged communities and rural communities throughout the state. Simultaneously to that effort, the Governor's Office of Economic Development is rewriting the entire statute dealing with incentives. And as a part of that consideration, they are looking at retooling the way in which they provide grant resources to local providers to expand broadband networks. Two things that we've actively been working on in this. Two things that we've actively been working on in this effort is anytime that there is any state or federal dollars that pass through the state that go towards the effort, that the gold standard that we're trying to adhere to is at least one gig of service. There are a few operators in the state that can provide that service, but Utopia is one of those. So that would be the standard in which we're trying to reach on any future grant. And in addition to that, we would require that if any grant is awarded to a private provider to put in infrastructure using state resources or federal resources that came by way of grant, it would require that those individuals also leave that network open to other providers to also use in order to provide competition through the open network, which obviously is a benefit to the Utopia network and model as well. So those are two things that are actively being discussed and put into the potential go ahead restructuring bill. So please, I'll keep you apprised as that one becomes available, we're actively working on that front as well.
All I can say is way to go, keep up the good work. That's exciting. Anything else, counsel there? If not, Lincoln, thank you very much. And we'll move on to, or any questions on, we'll cover these quickly unless someone has comments. There's usually not many. Counsel calendar? Potential future agenda items?
I just have one question at this time.
Yes.
The gentleman up in Salt Lake that is housing homeless in his yard, do we have all of our ordinance in place to make sure that doesn't happen in West Valley?
That is a dang good question, Karen, thank you very much. And yes, we do. I'm always open to, and looking for other ways to strengthen those ordinances, but yeah, we're, we're in good shape there. In fact, what he's doing is actually illegal in Salt Lake City, too. They're just, I think, trying to figure out what to do with him.
Well, I know they've given him a deadline of when they need to be gone. And I know we had a house on thirty-five hundred west of fifty-six that was housing the homeless a few years ago, and we got that cleaned up. I was just making sure that we're all good. I thought we were.
Yeah, it does happen more often than you guys hear about.
Oh, I know.
And we do do a lot of that effort, but yeah, we've always been able to clean that out and take care of it where we're made aware.
Okay, thank you.
Also, if I could just add a quick statement, just interesting you would ask that question today. We actually, as you know, we've been putting a lot of effort over the last few years into the whole homelessness effort, both on the helping where we can, but at the same time maintaining our city and ordinances. I know Nicole today went out and did a tour of the river, which would include our property, county property, the water, Rocky Mountain Power, from Trailhead Park all the way down to our south border. There, it was completely clean. So when you hear these other cities say they can't keep encampments off the river, that's just a matter of will, frankly. But I, you know, I report on that just because we're, we were very happy, we're happy to have that and see that and, and glad to have that report.
Okay, thank you.
And Wayne, just on that report on the Jordan River, why it's not a one-time deal either, like most of them think. It's an ongoing effort. And the way you got there was an ongoing effort, so that's great. Thank you for the great work.
Here, potential future agenda items, I have one item here, and I wanted to ask you. Two thousand seventeen, we, we had a big jump from acre, something, something center, we jumped up to one acre. And a couple of properties on Redwood Row, basically just aligned with the Redwood Row on East Side. And they stuck, they got a zero point eight one, and I think is, that not for land for so many years. So I do want to revisit that one again, I think Steve Patrick mentioned about that last time. Is where you can print it up, and then we can look at it. It's a big jump, I think this is too big. From half acre, seven center, we jumped to one acre in two thousand seventeen, so I'll take a look at that one.
Okay, Wayne, I'm having some problems with my internet here. I missed part of Steve Pastrick's comments, and I missed some of Tom Hune's. It's my local internet, I believe, and it's, and so so I don't know what was all said there. So if you would handle that, maybe I can ask a clarifying question. Tom, are you talking about a particular property or more of an overall zoning ordinance change that had to do with Chesterfield?
A couple properties, one adjacent to the, I believe, Methodist Church or something nearby the one, the Redwood Row, is the address of twenty-five, thirty-one south, Redwood Row. And the second one that belows, the one that they, you know, Steve, he brought up about the people, they selling stuff like your cell stuff, and that the vacant man ready to, and that's the one. And, yeah, and next to that one is twenty-seven ninety-three South Redwood Row, too.
Okay, I got both addresses, so I did pick that up. So I'll get an update on both the properties from CEB.
Yeah, yeah, please.
You bet.
All right.
Anything else on future agenda items? Not? Counsel reports? And I'm having a hard time telling if everyone just suddenly froze, or if my computer's bad. Can you hear me?
You folks.
I can hear you, Mayor.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Your picture did freeze, Mayor, but we can hear you. Or maybe we can no longer hear you now.
Okay, am I connected back up?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, by the way, we probably ought to have some sort of rule that if I suddenly go quiet, that the mayor pro tem needs to step in. I don't know what happened. That's the second time I've been kicked completely out. Hope I didn't miss too much. Let's see, counsel reports we were on. Did anyone give one, by the way? No, I would mention the following. I have received my vaccination, the Moderna vaccine, the first dose. And because of that, the council, the county council invited me down to the Mountain America Exposition Center. And I volunteered there this morning for a couple of hours, giving people, taking their temperatures they came in. And a lot of first responders and healthcare workers came in for their second dose while I was there. That was the biggest majority of the people. But those are available, I understand they got some additional doses and from Pfizer. And so they've opened up more slots for people to come in and get vaccinations. And I heard a report on the radio that Mountain America is doing much better than down in Utah County. Some wait there like three hours. I don't, I didn't see that at all. Although there was quite a line for the second doses. So it looks like that's moving forward. I think we're doing some for first responders at the Maverick Center. I don't know if that's going to expand, Wayne, beyond that, to do general vaccinations, give people shots beyond that when they have.
We don't have any word that it will yet, Mayor, but I can't see how it would not. They just would have to, in order to be able to scale up. Jake might actually know better than I do, but the, the current information we have, at least in our account, is the three.
Jake, did you have anything?
Mayor?
Yes, Don?
I received my first dose a couple of weeks ago down at the same place, down at Mountain America. And so I'm scheduled for next week to get the second dose. But they haven't sent me the information yet to schedule that second dose. So I called this morning, and their recording at the county says that all doses and appointments are full for the rest of this month. So I'm just waiting to have them give me a call and say, come on down for your second dose next week when you're supposed to. So I was on the Pfizer side of it, so it's a shorter second dose, shorter time period.
Okay. Yeah, with the Moderna, I gotta wait twenty-eight days.
Yeah, ours is, I think is only twenty-one.
Right, and Councilman Christiansen, if you did have any questions about that or wanted to get confirmation for scheduling, just contact me offline, we can figure that out. So just for.
My wife got her notice, but I haven't got mine yet, so that's why I was calling in. We got them the same day.
No worries, and, and just for knowledge of the council and community, I recently was switched over in my role at work, so I'm now the high volume vaccination coordinator for the state, which is super exciting, not stressful at all. But yeah, I would say to your point, Mr. Pile and also Mayor Bigelow, that good news is that it seems that our supply is steadily increasing, even with some unexpected extra doses being sent our way from Moderna and Pfizer pretty much every week moving forward. And with the rollout of some additional manufacturers, looking at out till March and April, the issue of not having enough supply is going to be, become an issue of finding enough providers to administer all the doses that will be coming in. So slowly but surely, we're getting there.
Yeah, one of the things that I've got to talk with the county, I know I made a few comments on some challenges with their signup, the county. There are people, and we had a couple of people come in today without appointments, wanting to get them. And for the most part, you know, we couldn't help them. We were able to help a couple of them for second doses. But these were people who were seniors, more senior than I even. And they looked like, you know, I've got to go do the computer. What else can I do? So maybe there ought to be consideration given to opening up a phone line where people could assist them to sign up by cut, actually typing the information in form. There's not a lot, but there were some. It's really a challenge for some of our senior citizens.
So I have, one of my friends posted that yesterday, her mom, who is over seventy, got her first dose at the Maverick Center yesterday. She's not a first responder, anything, she's just over seventy.
Oh.
And that's where they scheduled her, so.
Good, good. Yeah, I heard on the news about one of the senior citizen's children finally got her an appointment, happens from a daughter who lived in Hawaii.
Just a daughter, the computer.
Yeah, the daughter knew the computer, so. Anyway, thank you. Is there anything else? We do not need a closed session? Very good, and we'll call it for this meeting, and we'll see you at six thirty. But I'd like a motion, and then I'll do that little thing without objection.
Motion to adjourn.
Without objection, then we will stand adjourned from our planning meeting, planning. Yes, our, and we'll meet at six thirty. Hearing no objections, I'll rule that last unanimously. Thank you.